And to recognize, we only have one student that showed up tonight. It's Ava Kaiser. Ava, do you want to come up here and stand up here with us? That would be great. So in the fall of this year, we created a community connection committee, and it is a group of staff and community members. I partnered with Jen Harnish and also Beth Hammond to get a group in January, or last fall, excuse me, last fall, we sent, we decided we needed to assist the students. They were, in some of our surveys, we understood that students were struggling with not being able to have connections with their peers. So we wanted to, as a group, to create a mentor program. So we have secondary students and elementary students. We sent out a call in January for anyone to sign up that was interested. We actually got a lot more secondary mentors than we did elementary mentees, which was really great. We had the students fill out some information to tell us what their interests were, and then Jen and myself paired them up. And then in February, we hosted our very first virtual meeting. We had 24 students participating, and we did, we met for 40 minutes, and we spent the first, maybe 10 minutes getting to, like checking in with each other, seeing how it was, and then we broke the students out with their mentor buddy into into breakout rooms where they could do specific activities. So this is all the information that I just kind of talked about and how we set that up. I will let you know that Alice did a great job about writing an article for the press and about Zephyr Buddies, and it came out last week. Was it last week, Alice? Maybe two weeks ago. And May 12th, yep. And so that is included in your board packet for you to review. Here are some of the comments that, we did a survey after two months, just to get some comments and see where the students were at. And then we also asked the parents of the mentees to also give us some feedback. And really, very there were wonderful comments that we got from both mentees and mentors. But I did want to take a minute. This is one of our mentees. His name is Greer, and they sent in a short video. So I wanted to
I signed up for the first Zephyr Buddies because when COVID hit, it was hard to see friends. I liked when I got to share my screen to play Elvis music. I like doing the crowds. I like doing the games. I like having snacks. My Zephyr Buddy likes Elvis like me. And she's nice and kind. And funny. I felt included, happy, and that's why I like hanging out. That's why I like doing it as Zephyr Buddies. And I like my Zephyr Buddy.
So Greer did a really great job of expressing all the wonderful things that he got out of Zephyr Buddies. His buddy is Sarah Brings. And some of the really great things that came out of Zephyr Buddies was some of these students are actually, which we were hoping, are making connections and doing things outside of our every other week. We started in February, every other week, and then we had our first in-person meeting, May 4th. So we did two in-person meetings, and that's where the snacks came in. That Greer really liked. So it really was a really wonderful experience. And Ava, we just want to take the time to say thank you. We know that all of our students are extremely busy and have lots of things on their schedules, but you guys made time, you've made connections. You personally have gone above and beyond and did meetings outside of our meeting time with your buddy. And I know that family really appreciated that. So thank you. We are looking at, hoping to continue this program next fall, and I think there's 90% of the students said that they would like to return. So we're going to continue. And thank you to Jen for doing a wonderful job of helping me out every other Tuesday night and planning activities. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Zephyr Buddies? Don't run away too quickly. All right. Well, thank you so much for your work on that. We really appreciate it.
We, I really appreciate how innovative this was, and that you saw a need for connections for, you know, between our students. And you felt, you went out of your way and found other parent volunteers to help really organize and bring our community together when, when it was hard to do. So thank you for that. And I know I can say that I would see Kate Anderson after Zephyr Buddy Day and how excited, I mean, I know it brought you a lot of joy too, to see the connections.
Jenna and I talked about that.
Yeah.
Honestly, just watching this video today, it almost made me cry.
Yeah, yeah. So it's been great for all of us. So thank you again for all of your time in this. I hope you, I hope you got a lot out of the connections as well. Yeah, thank you.
Next, we're on to our spotlight. Our spotlight tonight is Madamida High School.
All right. Good evening, and thanks for having me here tonight. This is the school board and to Superintendent Duffrin. I'm Justin Hahn, the principal at the high school, and tonight I have the pleasure of sharing some really cool learning experiences with you. And there's going to be two asynchronous presentations, one in a French class and one in Ms. Goucher's band class. And then we've got some students who are here tonight as well to share a cross-curricular experience with you. All right, I'm going to make sure Patrick told me how to run this. So the elements that you're going to see in the videos and with the students who'll be presenting live comes straight out of our, our high school mission statement. And so the three elements that you're going to see, desire and ability to explore passions, dynamic educational experiences for varied interests, and then a culture that seeks out and honors diverse and global perspectives. And so as I think about this, and what really gets, gets me excited is that we start to see how teachers are incorporating this into their classrooms. And then what students are able to do through that student agency or student voice and take that, and what they're creating with that in the way of assignments or these learning experiences that we have in class. And so in our plan, in our, in our mission statement, you can see the underlying portions, one coming from our, our statement itself, that desire and ability to explore the passions again. And then in the supporting pieces with a culture that seeks out and honors diverse and global perspectives, and then dynamic educational experiences for varied interests to help support that mission statement. So I've got to give credit to Alice Soifert as well with this. And so this, I just, I'll tell you a little bit of background here with this piece of it. So what you see on the left-hand side is this idea of what the status quo would be in like a regular classroom. And this originated from the conversation with Laura Goucher, who is our band teacher. And so that's where it came from, because what Alice does a really good job of is being able to listen. And then she can take out like the essence of what you're trying to say. And so what happened with the conversation was she was listening to Laura talk and all these great things that are happening in the band classroom. And she said, well, just tell me what a regular band class looks like. And so what you see on the left is a status quo. And then on the right, in more general terms, are the pieces that were picked out that reflect the experiences that students are having in our band classroom. And so this is in a little bit more detail in the next portion here, but this is for French. So so what we see with the French class is Ms. Katsky, or Kratsky, she, when you look at this, the combined grammar and communication skills that we're focused on. So she took all these grammar skills and students using their language skills to communicate through reading, writing, and speaking. And so it was this really look at all these different components with the French language and then using them to communicate. There was also the inclusion of interpersonal speaking skills, so understanding the feelings of others and active listening. And she did this through different events that students were able to have input on with things like Penn Pals and also Pet Projects. And then some of the different dynamic learning opportunities that you'll hear about too, bringing in some technology pieces. So looking at things like EdPuzzle and Flipgrid, and you'll hear a little bit in the video about how those impacted students' learning, especially through our distance learning and hybrid learning models, and then other different tech tools that were brought in as well. That student agency piece was a big part of what Ms. Kratsky was able to do. She surveyed her students and brought in their interest in that language, built units around what things that they were interested and excited about learning. And so that they could take and apply what interests they had and then be able to speak about that in the French language. And then the last one there, with curiosity and reflection interpretative tests. So making space for students to express more than one way of answering test questions, allowing reflection versus arbitrary answers. And then also reflecting about the similarities and differences with other cultures and reflecting on their current experiences. And so with that, we'll start a short video clip here for you.
Bonjour. Ça va?
Ça va.
Okay, so we are going to talk a little bit about technology and French this year. So the first question that you guys can both answer is how has technology enhanced language learning for you guys this year?
Okay, for us, like usually in class, I guess we wouldn't do as many like paper activities as you would have think. We would start like doing, using all those like available online websites, for example, Kahoot and Quizlet. And then this year we have like booklet, which is like, which I guess makes it more fun. And then you want to, like, you're able to remember more stuff through these games. So I guess that's like the benefit of it.
Okay.
And then we also at home use Flipgrid, which while not the most
exciting.
Exciting, but it does help with our practicing our listening and speaking skills, which definitely over distance learning were the hardest to practice. So that was really helpful.
And then like as you're filming your Flipgrid, you just like continuously just like listen to yourself again. And then you know, like where you like did something wrong, and then you go back and you're able to correct it.
Yeah, it helps you kind of build that skill of self-correction, right? Okay, so Kalen, what is one of the kind of the themes that we've covered this year that you really connected to? And like, kind of, why did you connect to it?
Probably current, the current unit we're learning right now, which is about like travel in like different regions. And like the general phrases on, oh, if you're going to like board a flight, what's the process? And then along the lines of like, oh, it's over here that eat this food. And then it's just like, everyone needs to know like how to order stuff. And then I also like connect with this because I really travel a lot in normal years.
Okay, nice. And then Smriti, how do you feel like you have like a voice and some choice in French?
So I definitely feel like I have a voice in the class. It's just like the setting and the way like we're succeeded is just like, we can talk to you as like just normal, I feel like. And then like you'll ask us questions like, hey, next week, we're probably going to have a test. Do you feel ready? And everyone's going to be like, ah, next week already? But also like just the topics, I remember you asked us whether we wanted to do like animals first or travel first. And personally, I really wanted to learn about like animals and pets and stuff. So I was really excited that we got to do that instead of maybe pushing it off for next year.
Awesome. All right, you guys, well, thank you very much, and I will see you in a little bit.
All right, the two students that are in there are Smriti Samtani and Kalen Chen. And so what they're talking about too, the way that the classroom is set up, and thanks to a MAFE grant that Libby had wrote for last year, had received tables. We couldn't actually put them into use until students were back in, in full person, in that in-person learning model. But they were put together in time for the students to come back in that March timeframe. And they allow for whiteboard, there's a whiteboard tabletop, and they're in different shapes. And so the students really have that collaborative environment in her class too. One of the things I've been able to observe. So she really allows for that collaboration and that, and that learning together. So and the students, one of the things too, I should point out that they're talking about with the use of Flipgrid is that self-assessment. That's really a powerful tool for students to be able to learn is to be able to self-assess. So all right, whoops. We're going to move on here. All right. So the same thing that you saw earlier with the French piece is true of the band piece as well. And this is the one that had kind of originated with having that conversation about what that status quo looks like. And then off to the right-hand side, what Laura Goucher was explaining was happening in her band classes. And so you'll have the opportunity to see and hear from students again about their experiences that happen in that class. And again, the, the one thing I should, I should point out here is it's just a really neat thing to be able to see teachers, what they're striving for, and being able to pull out like one piece of our strategic plan. But that the impact isn't maybe just in that one area. There's a lot of overlap too. And so you're going to see that with this high school band class. You'll also see it in our last one too, as you just saw with the French class as well. And so a little bit more in-depth here. So in band this year, there are a lot of things that Laura had done. She started the year by speaking at a state conference for band. And, you know, and at that point in time, they were really learning about, so what COVID protocols you'd be undertaking in a band class, right? And there's all kinds of things I could tell you that I learned about band and the things that were happening around COVID. But one of the things that Laura did is she spoke at the conference about like what composers represent underrepresented groups. And so she created this wall outside of her classroom with different BIPOC women and composers from the LGBTQ community as well. And so students are able to see themselves, and you hear that some of those conversations that happened too with the four students that were interviewed. She had a ton of different things like, let's get creative project, and they'll talk a little bit more about that in the video as well. And then just how creative you have to get in a performance art with, when you're virtual, when you're hybrid, and then also in person. So all those different types of performances happen throughout the course of the year. And the last one, the last band concert of the year, which will be in person, will be on Monday, June 7th. Big pieces with student agency and leadership here too. Students are leading and performing in sectional groups. They're able to put their voice and, and talk about different choices for musical selections that they're going to take on. And then also just, there's a great quote on the bottom here. Another piece of bringing in different composers was that Laura actually went out and made contact with a number of different composers and tried to have a question and answer session with them for an hour. And I had an opportunity during the year to sit down on one of those, but you can see the quote at the very bottom there. And I'll just read it, but it says, you know, one student in their response after meeting Ms. Nishimura said, oh, my gosh, it was so inspiring. Sometimes I wonder if band is really the right thing for me, because maybe I won't be able to do it after high school. So then what's the point? But she realizes that, you know, it doesn't matter if I love it, then I should keep doing it. And really speaking to that passion, you know, being able to follow those passions. And so I will take you to the video where there's four students, and I'll introduce them here first before we get going. There's Peter Olson, Helen Atkins, Jonah Shumnawski, and also Alicia Geezer. And so Ms. Goucher will introduce her students as well here. I will let you know this video is a little bit longer than the last one. So there's some really great things in it though, so.
Good evening, board. We're really happy to be with you tonight to talk about the Madamida High School Band and the things we've been doing to uphold our mission of extraordinary learning and unleashing our passions. My name is Laura Goucher, and I'm the director of bands at the high school. And I am honored to have four of my amazing students and musicians here with me today to talk to you about the things that we've done this year. So I'm going to have them go around and share their names and what grade they're in and what they play. So Peter.
Hi, my name is Peter Olson. I'm a junior this year at Madamida, and I'm a percussionist.
Hi, I'm Helen, and I'm also a junior percussionist.
Hi, I'm Jonah. I'm a senior saxophone player.
And hi, I'm Alicia. I'm a senior percussionist.
And I have three questions that I'm going to be asking the students, and different people will answer different questions. So the first question I'm going to ask is, what is unique about what we're doing in the Madamida Band Program? What exceptional things have we done that you don't think is common in other band programs? And we're going to have two students talk about this, and I'm going to first pass it off to Alicia.
All right. One thing that we've done differently this year is we've actually focused a lot on identities as our band program. One thing we did at the beginning of the year is everyone did an identity project where they picked a word or something to describe themselves or how they identify. That could be like gender, like whether or not you're like a sibling, just anything that describes who you are as a person. And then we picked a song to go along with that. And then everyone shared those projects with the class, which was just really interesting to see, like the different ways people identify themselves and how they identified with like the song they chose. To go along with that, as the band vice president this year, I was put in charge of updating the composer wall in the band hallway. So what that entailed was I would type up descriptions of the different composers we played. Because again, we focused a lot on identities this year. And one of the things with identities is making, making sure that like everyone feels included in our band program. So we made sure to play a lot of different songs by different people with different races, different genders, sexual orientations, all of that good stuff. Just so that like everyone in the band program felt included and they could see themselves in the music we were playing. So that was also part of the reason why I updated the composer board was that like you could actually visually see yourself on the composer wall and see like how you, like your identity has made an impact in our band and in the music community. Finally, actually more recently, we did a underrepresented composer project where everyone in the band or in, I think it was Ziwi and ZJE.
Zwo.
Zwo picked a composer that like was of some sort of underrepresented identity, like like a female composer or LGBTQ, anyone that they found either particularly interesting or identified with. And they researched them, looked up some of their music, found some songs they identified with, and we shared that to the class as well. Which was just another exciting opportunity to see how our classmates, classmates identify themselves. And yeah.
One more piece on that, Alicia. Do you want to talk about not only that we have the composer wall, but the conversations that we got to have with composers as well?
For sure. Yeah, we actually got to meet with several different composers this year. I know for me personally, there was this one composer interaction we had with a composer named Amir Moletpour, who lives in Iran. And that was really cool because we got to send him questions. And he, even though he couldn't do an actual Google Meet, because like his government didn't allow him to, like, he sent us back a video answering all of our questions. And it was just super cool to see like how his influences as an Iranian composer have like influenced his compositions. And just to hear more about that composition process from him. So like several different bands throughout the year have been meeting with different composers. And yeah, that's something new we've done this year as well.
And Jonah's not prepared for this, but Jonah was there at composer interaction in Jazz Ensemble that we had that, that's, that you found important or helpful to you. Or what one you enjoyed?
Well, I enjoyed all of them a lot, and I learned a ton from all of them. And I can't pick out the one you're alluding to, but.
I'm not picking any, I just wanted to know which one you, if there was one that stuck. And in fact, Jonah actually got to participate in almost all of the composer interactions being in three groups. So was there any composer that stood out for you? There's no right or wrong answer. There's no right or wrong answer.
Well, Lisa de Spain, she had a lot of cool insights on the composer like niche world. And she was just a super genuine person. And it was really cool just to see that they're like real people.
Yeah, this was, that was a new thing we did this year. I've never done it before in groups and it was really eye-opening to the kids and to me as well and the composers who are now several of them lifelong friends of the Motamita Band Program, which is exciting. So thank you, Alicia, for talking about all that. And I'm just gonna, maybe some of you don't know what Ziwi and ZG and all that is, our, our band names. We've got three different concert bands at the high school this year and we have the Curricular Jazz Band. We have Zephyr Wind Ensemble, Ziwi, Zephyr Jazz Ensemble, ZG. We have Zwo, which is a Zephyr Wind Orchestra, and we have ZCB, Zephyr Concert Band. So same question I posed to Helen.
Yeah, so another fun project we got to do this year that I thought was pretty special was called our Let's Get Creative Project. So this kind of served as like our semester final for this year for first semester. And basically what it was is we all had a choice to take any song we had played in any one of our groups this year and just do something creative with it. It was super open and it just gave us all a chance to really tie our music that we'd been playing into other passions we had. So some people baked some like thing that they felt related to the song, some people choreographed a dance. Some people took the song and composed their own song that they felt was inspired by the piece we had played. So that overall just allowed us really get more creative with our songs and go beyond just simply learning them. Like I feel like a lot of band programs do. We got to really take it to the next step and connect with our music more, which is super cool. And I also think something that's really cool about the Motamita Band Program, which I think is often overlooked is that there's just so many band opportunities for everyone. Like as Ms. Goucher just said, we have four different band groups that meet during the day. And so there's a lot of choice with what you're doing there. And then on top of that, we have before-school jazz bands for anyone who wants to be a part of that, that maybe can't fit that in their schedule. And we also have percussion ensemble and pit orchestras that are largely student-led. And so with all those opportunities, everyone just gets a chance to be able to further pursue their music in the way they enjoy the most.
Great, thank you Helen. And I know you might hear more about some of these other projects later by, in, in other questions, because they, they tie together. Helen, I know the second question goes to you as well. Second question is how have you had voice and choice in the band program this year?
Yeah, so first, we have a really cool band leadership team in our band program. And it's led by people, just representatives from all different grades and bands and instrument groups. And so through that, that group has a lot of like say and where we want the band program to go and what things we wanna pursue and continue to do, which is super cool. And it just makes sure that everyone's opinions get heard throughout the band. And then on top of that, like for picking our music this year, instead of just having Ms. Goucher pick what she felt we'd enjoy, she had us do like a fun bracket activity where everyone in band got to listen to like certain parts of the different songs. She was thinking about having us play and vote for what they thought would be or which, what, with what the songs they wanted to play. So that was super cool, because we all got like a bit of a say in our own way of what pieces we wanted to play. And that turned out super well, because I think everyone's really been enjoying all the music we've been playing this year. And then finally, in Zephyr Wind Ensemble, we've been breaking up into these small ensemble groups that we've had. And Ms. Goucher put us in these groups and gave us a piece to work on. And then within those groups, section leaders have worked on working on these pieces in their small ensembles. And so just different people in the band have had a say in like helping their group, leading them through music and all working on that together, which gives everyone different, like different perspectives and different music experiences, which is super cool.
And in addition to that, we also have section leaders throughout the band. I know Peter, I didn't have you talking about this, but do you wanna talk about just what, what it means to be a section leader in any of the four bands?
So, okay, I'm unmuted now. So basically what a section leader does is, of course, you have sections in bands, you have like your trumpets, your clarinets, your percussion section. So what a section leader does is it's typically who's some, or it's typically someone who's quite experienced at the instrument. And what they can do is they can offer guidance or tips to other people in those sections to basically help them improve. And it's really also a great way to help your section just bond more. Because section leaders get to talk to everyone else and you just get to form great bonds with your section because of the help that your section leaders give. Of course, we also have time for class, or during class for sectionals, which is basically when the section leaders will give out all this information. They can talk to the section about like how to play this part and basically just give really good tips on how to play better.
Thank you, Peter. The final question, well, the third question, and then we have one wrap-up question. How have you been able to explore your passions thanks to band this year? So Jonah, I'll pass it to you.
Yeah, so I've been able to explore my passions by getting to be in multiple bands, including Wind Orchestra, Wind Ensemble, and Jazz Ensemble. And in each of these, I've had a slightly different experience, so I got to see and participate in multiple levels of band. Like in Wind Orchestra, I got to work with younger students and underclassmen, so I got to help them with their music and their playing during like sectionals, because I'm a section leader in all the bands, I guess. And I got to teach them things that I was taught by upperclassmen when I was in their position and things I wish I was taught when I was back then. And in Wind Ensemble, I got to play with a lot of great musicians and I got to learn from them, be humbled by them, get to work things out together. And in Jazz Ensemble, I got to lead a lot and help the younger new members grow in their playing and improvisation and lead a lot overall from being a section leader and just help the community grow. And that's how I've been able to explore my passions for band.
Great, thank you Jonah. Do you wanna just talk a little bit about your experience as a musician and your improvisation? And how, how has that helped you unleash your passions with, through improvisation?
Well, with improvisation, it's like you've got guidelines, but you don't have to go exactly with that. And like you can do whatever you want, air quotes, but like it's, I don't know, it's like a great experience to be able to do it so much. Like I'll take any solo I can, just so I can get better at it.
Thank you. And then Peter, I know you have some answers to it. And if you would also touch on the different ways we've been able to perform throughout the year despite all of the learning models. So go ahead, Peter.
So obviously, everyone knows with the pandemic that's been happening, it's really just a tough year for school in general. But that has not stopped our band program from unleashing our creativity and doing or being able to do things that we are passionate about. And for me, the things that I've been able to do that I'm most passionate about are the many projects that we've done over the year. The first of which, which really stood out to me was our active listening project, which was way back in like October of last year. But it was essentially a project where students got to choose music that they enjoy, that they're passionate about, and then analyze it for qualities that stood out to them. So for example, the piece I chose was obviously something orchestral, because we had to choose an orchestral or wind band piece. It was Ravel's La Valse. And in class, I basically just got to spend a whole day listening to and analyzing one of my favorite orchestral works, which was really just a lot of fun and it was also really interesting. And then also at the end of first semester, I know Helen touched on it previously, but we had a project called the Let's Get Creative Project, which was basically a way for the students in band to connect the music to some things they're passionate about. For example, we had like baking, of course, we had dance and even poetry. And this was probably my favorite project, because there was also an option to give a performance. And of course, performing is something that I'm passionate about. So that was probably one of the best ways that I was able to unleash my passion throughout the school year. Also, as Ms. Goucher touched on, we had, of course, we had to adapt the way that we performed this year. And obviously, it's not gonna be easy to do that, but we were able to have many groups perform. We had jazz band performances, percussion ensemble performances, and even regular concert band performances, despite the huge amount of people that we have in those bands. So there was still no barrier between us, or there was no barrier of the, of course, the pandemic between us and being able to perform the pieces that we're passionate about.
Great, thank you Peter. And the way we performed, what might have been a little different, in December, we did performances that were virtual performances where most kids recorded their parts from home. And I edited the, the pieces together to make us sound like one band playing in the same room. In March, we got to play all together on the stage, but we had no audience. And we're, we're excited this time of year for our final concert coming up on June 7th, that we're gonna actually have a live audience of the other band students as well as senior families. So, so we are still, still working to be a performing group as well as having these great opportunities this year to do other things as well. As a wrap-up question, I'm just gonna ask each student to just give a succinct answer to this question. In what ways have the Mott Bands not just survived this COVID year, but have thrived? So Jonah?
We've had a lot of opportunities to learn and grow as a band community through like projects and performances.
I think in this year of like confusion and uncertainty, our student leadership has really been allowed to grow, whether that's through band leadership team or section leaders, just adapting as a band. I think, I mean, out of all of my classes, I think band has felt the most normal, like consistently throughout the year, which seems probably pretty surprising, but band's been like a solid rock for me throughout this year. So yeah.
Every now and then in band, we get to have fun days, which is a great way for the band to thrive.
Just throughout the school year with how like different everything's been, just having band as a place where we can all connect and be there for each other, I feel like has made bonds within the band just way stronger than they were ever before, even though it's always been a super tight community. So yeah, I think that's one way that the band community has really thrived.
And I just wanna wrap up by also giving really great news that, that the band program has received this week. We had 15 students in the Motamita Band Program audition for all-state bands and orchestra and jazz bands this year, which is a very intensive audition process the students had to go through. And they had to, they had to prepare for several months. And again, we had 15 kids audition, which was huge. But even huger, we found out on, on Monday that seven of our students actually are, have been accepted into the all-state ensembles for next year and one alternate. So this is an all-time high for Motamita. The, as I look at the plaques from previous years, the, the highest amount we've ever had in one year was four, and that was 20 years ago in 2001. And we have three in all-state jazz and until this year, we have not had any students in all-state jazz from Motamita again for 20 years. So, so we're thriving despite the challenges that have been thrown at us. And it's all thanks to students like the four students you see right here, who, who love making music and who love working with each other and are able to unleash their passions together in a, in a safe place. So thank you for listening to our conversation and thank you to the four of you for taking the time to talk with us today. Thanks for supporting Motamita Bands.
So along with those seven, we had four all-state choir students as well. So pretty robust, you know, fine arts program, so really happy. And we just had a choir concert this past Monday. So very cool to see them round out their school year with that. A lot of the things that the students just talked about, you could see that they were still, despite the challenges that we face this year, were able to enjoy the things that they've traditionally been able to enjoy and really take even a step forward with their learning in that capacity and the collaboration that you heard from the kids, really outstanding in the band program. So, all right, with that, we're gonna move to our in-person presentation and I'll just, I'll introduce them in just a minute here. A couple of the areas that you see, again, this is, so the one thing I wanna talk about with this particular presentation as part of it, is that this was a cross-curricular endeavor here with both English being represented by Ms. Laurenson and then with the field ecology class by Mr. Lane and allowing that collaboration to happen across curricular areas. And then students taking even from one semester to another semester. So this, the students wanted to do in person, so this was a late addition to this presentation. But they wanted to have an opportunity tonight to speak with an authentic audience and in front of the school board. And so I really commend them for that, I'm proud of the fact that they wanted to come here and do that. And the other piece is that this is for their final project in English, so. So Ms. Laurenson's here for that grading aspect too tonight. But I think it's a better replacement, right, than, than what you're gonna do, probably, right, Lydia and Dom? Okay, so with that, I'm gonna have them come up. So we have Lydia Holson and then Dominic McCullough, if you two wanna come on up and.
Alrighty. All right, hi, my name is Lydia Holson. The reason why I went to the land acknowledgement was because I found the culture and the religion of the Dakota people were exceedingly fascinated and I wanted to carry them further into second semester.
My name is Donna McCullough and my biggest reason for taking this opportunity to present and talk about this was to gain a new perspective on the land. I'm a hunter and it was very interesting learning about the topic of land acknowledgements regarding the land. So a big question probably that most of you have is what is a land acknowledgement? The idea of a land acknowledgement is to provide an understanding of the relationships indigenous people have with the land we currently reside on. The goal is to allow people to recognize the relationships Native Americans have with their traditional land. They are a way to recognize the land in an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those who have belonged to prior to us. Although there is some negative controversy, which we'll get into later, surrounding them, they're an honest attempt at understanding the cultural relationship between people and the land. We are taught in a way that this land was once empty in the long history. But in fact, we were wrong with that. Native Americans have lived on this land for thousands of years before we were here. Land acknowledgements are a way to teach and inform people about the truths of the indigenous people.
This brings us to our actual land acknowledgement that Dominic and I have been working on for majority of second semester during field ecology. We, the students and staff of Motamita High School, acknowledge that we gather on the traditional land of the Dakota people from the past and in the present. We honor and respect of this land that we currently reside on. This acknowledgement is a formal way to show our respects and recognize the hardship the indigenous people who lived on this land before have endured. This is our way of making positive steps towards understanding and respecting the people and learning the, learning from their ways relative to the life that we, life of the land that we currently reside on. Doing this is crucial to understanding the history and the relationship between the land and the people who have previously and currently reside on it.
So as I said, some of there is a negative controversy with land acknowledgements. And while we are hoping to adopt the land acknowledgement district-wide, we also think it is important to recognize that there are problems associated with landing options. There is a lot of dispute between Native Americans and land acknowledgements. A lot of Native Americans feel that there is no action included in our landing mentions. A large number of them are seen as just empty statements meant to appease Native Americans and indigenous groups of people. A good example is giving an apology. If you apologize for an action and then don't change your actions and do the same thing over and over again, then there's no meaning behind the apology, so there's no point in giving it. Yes, there is some meaning in the idea of trying to do something, but words without action are just empty words. Some of these statements are seen as just that, empty words meant to appease indigenous groups of people. Our group, our goal is to have a statement that allows for further action toward equity for indigenous people in our community.
With recent events coming to light, land acknowledgements have become more prominent. This has now led to more growth and understanding for many people. We hope you will consider implementing the land acknowledgement within our school throughout the district. This will go down in Motamita history as an important step towards acknowledging the indigenous people within our community. But even then, there's a lot of work to be done. Thank you.
Any questions from board members? So can you tell us more about the process to get to the land acknowledgements that you've come up with in terms of your research and the information you've gathered?
For the information that we gathered, we mostly got it from first semester with Ms. Laurenson's class, English 11. But with that, we would have to do further research with, also with you guys involved, going through the board to expand our knowledge with that.
Yeah, Ms., in first semester, we ever each, the whole English 11 class broke into groups and each group had, like there was mapping of the Dakota people, there was the use of the land, there was tradition. So we did, everyone did research on just information about the Dakota and Native people. And Lydia and I did a bunch of research writing the land acknowledgement that we currently have. Just because the information that was gathered in English 11 wasn't necessarily tailored to creating this document that we made. So we had some other information as in like the controversies that surround it and how we can solve that or what actions to take afterward. So there was lots of research that went to it, but we ended up doing more after the fact of information gathered in first semester. fact of information gathered in first semester.
Yeah.
I do not know the answer to this question, so I probably shouldn't be asking it, but some time ago, we, as a board, examined the idea of having Indigenous People Day put on our school calendar. And I don't, it was three or four years ago, maybe, and I'm just, does anybody know if we ever did that? I think there was an idea that because it wasn't a actual, you know, day off kind of thing, that it just didn't have a place in the calendar, but I'm curious if...
What I thought happened was that the governor had declared it Indigenous People Day. That was when Governor Dayton was still in office, and we thought that that was covering it at the time.
I thought there was a piece about multiple calendars. There's a calendar that is helpful to families in the community in terms of being a one-page document, and there's many groups that we need to recognize, and we would be working on another calendar. I think that it's coming through with teachers in the classrooms to acknowledge many different days, not just Indigenous Persons' Day. But I'm not sure where that landed. I think that was before Barb was here as well, so...
It was definitely before Barb was here.
Right.
But maybe it's something for a future work study to...
To return to. Mm-hmm. So we, oh, go ahead, Julie.
Oh, I'm just curious if in your research, if you found any neighboring districts that had statements similar to what you're proposing?
I honestly have not looked.
Okay.
No, I mostly have information towards our individual groups. I didn't look at other communities. But my character...
Okay. Just curious.
So we also, just this year, started our Indigenous Family Group. And I was wondering, one, they're brand new, so I'm not sure if you know about them. Okay, then there goes my question, did you get to consult with them? So... Future plans. Soon. Sounds great.
They're only juniors.
Oh, they're only juniors. Oh, they got a whole year.
I have a question. I was wondering if we could get a copy of what it was that you read for us so that we can see that at some point, your proposed land acknowledgement?
Oh, well, definitely. We also have even bigger documents with more information about the land here and actually surrounding us going into White Bear. So if we would also like that, we could provide you with the information with that as well.
That would be terrific. I'd be really curious about what you found, so thank you.
Yeah.
Terrific. And your proposal then is, so you have this for us to consider. What you've also talked about in your presentation, you talked about next steps and making sure that there's some action to show, you use the analogy of an apology. So what is your, what do you propose is next for us together?
I think the biggest next step that we look forward to is that action can't always happen in two or three months. So I know that we have to be meeting stuff that, over three or four months, and/or in the back of things that were put for yearbooks and review. So I think the biggest next step would be if students could see it and actually do it. And if you just can't, students could take it and read it and work, stand through it. And I'm not exactly sure of the best way to do that, but awareness is part of that.
Terrific. Thank you. Yeah, Kevin?
Just, there is a resource that I don't know if you've seen, don't expect that you would have, but there's a group called Many Faces that did some pretty extensive research on Indigenous people around the White Bear Lake, and it's a Many Faces booklet, and I know I dropped some off. I think if you were to go back to community ed, they're absolutely free for a good home. I'd love to each, why don't you each grab a copy? But there's some good stuff in there that might help you on your journey.
In addition, we have a professional organization for school boards called the Minnesota School Boards Association, and they might be a nice resource in terms of how to think about boards, and it's a group we would probably consult with in terms of thinking about how this would work into existing policy and things like that, but that may be a group you'd like to consult with as well. Yeah. Thank you for all your time and effort. It's really impressive. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have our student report from Ismael. This is your last student report, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
That's going to be a hard act to follow, too, so...
Yeah, so this is my student report for the month of May. So at Wildwood, they had a fire drill on the 7th of May, and on the 28th of May, they're having a high school and second grade ecology connection, so that'll be really great for them. At OH Anderson, they had a nature trail day, May 14th. They also have a track and field day, June 1st through 3rd. So that's an event I remember in elementary school that was very fun. And at the middle school, the week of the 3rd to the 7th was teacher appreciation week. They had MCA testing, May 11th. And at the high school, basically the whole month of May was just AP testing, so we enjoyed that. And the 22nd was our prom, the Carnival of the St. Croix. It was very fun. I had a lot of fun there. And that's my last student report.
Questions or... Ismael, I want to thank you from the whole board for your service this year. It's been really great to have you. I know it's been a difficult year, doing some RME meetings on Zoom, doing some in-person, doing some hybrid, and you've done a nice job keeping us informed from the student perspective and answering questions when we've had them, and serving numerous roles as Barb spoke of, and we really appreciate that, that makes a difference to us in terms of hearing from our students. And as you leave our board and you go off to the Naval Academy, is that prep school? How do you think your board time is going to help and support your future work?
Well, being on the board has kind of made me want to kind of expand my vision for where I see myself in the next 20, 30 years. Holding this kind of public office has also helped me with my public speaking and also being more of a vocal leader, which obviously would help me a lot going into the Naval Academy and then into the Navy as well. So those are the things that I really cherish and really am honored that I have this opportunity to be on the school board.
Thank you. That's very helpful for us to think about how we can support students and future aspirations. I know one of our previous school board representatives is now an intern with Senator Uyghur and is taking some college courses in politics and has some aspirations there. So if you don't know Audrey anything, she might be one to connect with as well to think about that, so.
Well, thank you for your time, Ismael, because you have had a great time commitment this year, and I think we all acknowledge how long some of our meetings have been, and you have stuck with it, so...
You've earned my time.
Thank you.
Good luck to your future plans. When you come back into town, I'll be here, fun to hear about your experiences in the Naval Academy.
We will definitely be following. Many exciting things ahead for you.
Next on our agenda is our superintendent's report. Barb?
It's just such a hard act to follow, everything that's just happened here. And in fact, some of the things I was going to share with you about the band. But this week starts our tour of retiree party, retirement parties. We have quite a few staff members retiring, and we were at OH today, and I'm going to read them off. And even though some people would like to sneak out quietly, I am still going to read them off. So Roy Anderson at OHA, Sandy Armstrong at the high school, Lori Baker at Wildwood, Sheila Fry at OH, Pam Heron, who not a lot of you know, she is in our district office and is a whiz with special education funding, so we are very much going to miss her. John Kraus at the middle school, Annie Miller at Wildwood, Julie Osterbauer, who we get to recognize in June, Teresa Peterson at Wildwood, Marian Rice at Wildwood, Sue Robinson at Wildwood, Marie Sortland at the middle school, Chris Vaughn at OH, Catherine Voda at the middle school, and Lynn Beaker, who we will also acknowledge at a later date because she's still going to be here in June. So I do want to publicly thank all of our staff who are retiring this year, and we get to, again, we get to stop by and see them during those retirement parties, so thanks, thanks for coming with me to those because it is, it is nice to just be able to see everyone in person and just congratulate them and thank them for all their years of service. So congratulations to all of our retirees. And so I thought I'd say that first before I start talking a little bit about next year that are leaving us. But I know I have a lot of questions that are coming in about what's it going to look like next year, and all I have to say is at this point, we don't really know. And if, you know, if this year taught us anything, is not to be able to, we can't plan that far ahead, things change so quickly on us in terms of guidelines. So we did just get guidance a few, about half an hour before this meeting started regarding summer school, and I haven't had a chance really to look at it except to glance through it. So I, we will get more information out regarding what our protocols will be and how they've changed once we get to that point before summer school starts. And so all of those families who are participating, we will know, we will know more soon because, again, it just came out shortly, just a few minutes ago. So one thing I can tell you, because this has been emphasized, is school transportation at this time, all transportation does require masks. We will be requiring masks. It's the case if you fly still, anytime you take public transportation, that's a federal requirement, so that much I know. And so anyone who's using our buses during the summer will be required to wear masks. And beyond that, I don't actually know more, so I will get back to you. But, you know, again, we know, we're good at this now. We know how to stay safe. We know how to, we know how to layer mitigation strategies in order to keep everyone safe. We know that getting outside more is a great idea for kids, too. So any of our summer programming will be both fun, educational, and safe, so I can tell you that much. And I think at this point, those were the main things I wanted to make sure that I shared with you for next year. I mean, again, I've said this a number of times, I'll say it again, we are anticipating more normal operations for next year. We're anticipating that things will look a lot more normal in our operations, health and safety protocol-wise. We just don't know what exactly that's going to look like. And I know there are a lot of people that want more detail, and I'm just afraid we don't have that at this time, so. And I think that is, that's what I wanted to share this evening.
But you would agree that the more people that get vaccinated, the more likely things will go back to normal.
I think that is a very safe thing to say, yes, so I think that's been pretty consistent.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have the board member calendar, which is included in the board packet. We are wrapping up an academic year, and so there are a number of graduations and events coming up to be mindful of. There is rehearsal for graduation prior on June 12th that all seniors will attend, and new board members especially be good to attend to know where to stand in the process and those kinds of things. There are some changes from previous years, so it would be good if all board members could attend that, so we are ready. Other items on the board member calendar people like to call out?
We have our invitation to the Passages graduation. That is June 8th at 6:00 p.m. Also this week, June 3rd, if weather permits, there's a senior parade through the community, and if it rains, it's on the 4th, starting at 3:30, 3:30 to 4:30 about, right?
That's about right. And we're combining, this year, we're combining, so last year, there were two parades, one for our staff and then another one for the community, and so we're combining those, and so we're all looking forward to that. I know everyone enjoyed it.
It should be a fun day. Anything else on the calendar? Kevin?
Also, June 8th, it'll be a busy evening, but we have the Jay Stanley Doris Hill Legacy Award Ceremony outside at Lakewood Hills Park Pavilion behind the YMCA. And this year's recipient is a former school board member, Steve Wogomah, former city council member, Steve Wogomah, Lake Lynx co-chair, Steve Wogomah, and has done so much for our schools over the years, his service. And Wildwood, as most of you know, would not be where Wildwood is currently without Steve Wogomah's help in negotiating that land deal with waste management or one of those, one of those groups. And so anyway, if you have a chance, come on out. Again, it's outdoors, so it's safe, and honoring a really great guy, so.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the Mod Ameda Compensation Plan, Q Comp Annual Report. Jennifer Morthen, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jenny Morthen. Thanks for your time and attention tonight. First, I just thought I would talk a little bit about why we do the annual report. It is a requirement from MBE, and it has to be done by the 15th of June for you all to have the presentation. You did get a summary that has more details in your board packet, if you like, especially things broken down by school and more detailed than what I'm giving in this brief summary, but I'm sure you've all read your packet and you're good to go. So a program review is conducted essentially to find out if we have fidelity to our plan. Are we doing what we said we were going to do? And also, we're always looking at what is the impact on student learning? What type of data do we need to get on the program? How can we make it bigger or better or more impactful? So that is essentially what we're doing with the program review. The review has four different components, as you can see, the building-wide goals, personal learning communities, setting PLC goals, and then peer coaching. There is some overlap between the Q Comp or the MCP plan and staff development, for example, with setting building-wide goals, that we usually work together on doing that. And the next slide gives you basically a timeline of what we do when. I've already referenced the building-wide goals and the cycles. We do that, we start that in August with the District Instructional Leadership Team, and we use a continuous improvement model that basically follows your plan, do, study, and act. So we look at the goals after we look at the data and say, okay, what do we need to work on? Then we, once we have those set, we, as the MCP program, engage the staff to set PLC goals and individual goals. So it basically works, you know, wide first, then PLC goals, which is more focused, and then individual goals, which is really focused. So the big focus, the big picture, was the building-wide goals. These are carried over from last year because you all know we didn't have any state testing, no standardized, no MCAs, no ACTs in the spring of 2020. And the building-wide goals are required by MBEs to be based on standardized assessments, and so that is, we're bound by that. They did give us the option of, did we want to just carry it over? And we chose yes. The only exception was early childhood. They were switching their, one of the assessments that they were using in their program, and so they opted to have a new building-wide goal for them. So one of the other things that we do in the annual, we give an annual survey because we want anonymous feedback, and we've got great response. Eighty-six percent of the staff responded. Eighty-six percent of the staff responded this year, which is much higher than in years past. We're very happy with the results that we got on the survey. And you'll see, this is, I didn't put every question on the survey because we don't want to be here all night. But this is one of the questions on the survey. And you'll see in the blue, the, any of the quotes in blue are from teachers that we took directly from the survey. Just, I'll give you a minute here to, if you want to read the quote. This is not in the actual board packet, but you have access to the Google slides, so. So I picked this quote in particular because I think it really does a good job of summing up how the teachers were feeling. And they really, everybody knows how stressful this year has been for them. And they, eighty-five point three seems not very high, as you'll see, the other results are a lot higher. But that still is really pretty high for setting a building-wide goal, which sometimes teachers have trouble connecting with. For example, if you have a math goal and you teach French, you're kind of like, okay, how do I support the building-wide goal in math if I'm a French teacher? Or if I teach art, right? So I still feel like this is a really good result. And then the professional learning communities, obviously, they're all separated and they have their masks on. That's Wildwood in the top picture and English Language Arts from the high school in the bottom picture. This is really kind of where the rubber meets the road, where the professional learning communities, this is really where the change happens and the impact on student learning can really have a lot of force. And I, that is what we've seen when you look at how is valuable setting the PLC goals? We jump up to ninety-six point two. This is much more closely related to the teacher's day-to-day. Okay, this is what we're doing. Here's the unit we're working on. And so it's not unusual to see that their goal, obviously, the percentages are going up. Okay? And then overall, the district, these are the district-wide results. If you add up three, four, and five, which I consider good, good results, to what degree that you're working towards your PLC goal, contribute to better results for the students you serve, those three add up to ninety-one point nine percent, which I think reflects highly of the program and also of just the professionalism of the staff and the teachers that we have, that they, they really value doing a good job. They want to serve all their students. They want to meet their needs. And so working towards their PLC goals, they, they do understand that this is impactful for them. Do you have any questions so far? I know I'll have questions at the end, but I'm kind of going quick because we've been here. So, okay, so the next, like I said, we're kind of going from bigger to smaller. The peer coaching is essentially, just as we have in our district strategic plan, we like student agency and individualized learning and personalized learning. This is basically personalized learning for the teachers. This is as individualized as you can get for professional development. And working one-on-one with the peer coaching is, is what teachers could, typically, we get the feedback of this is the best staff development that we have. We really value having peer coaches. So the, the four peer coaches are Sue, I'm doing it in order, Sue Cordick and Stacy Triplet and Laura Tussie, and then myself, where are the four peer coaches that we have spread out throughout the district and working with a bunch of, some coaches are in between two buildings. So that's why we have that. Again, we took the survey and particularly wanted to hear about how people were feeling about their peer coach, where they supported. We had a lot of learning model changes this year, a lot of challenges, a lot of learning new tech. And not, and not everyone was in the same place as far as their tech relation, their tech skills. The, the quote in blue here really speaks to how strong the relationships are. And peer coaches work very hard at building trust and knowing their staff members, knowing the teachers that they're working with, so that when there are challenges, they do feel that they can come to us. And we can, they can, we can be honest and really work towards a solution. So again, ninety-six point one is awesome for a, for a response rate, for their valuation of it. And then another question was, just in general, how valuable is it to professional development? I'll give you some time to read this quote. It is pretty long, but I feel like it's very apt for this year. The word that's covered up is adapt, adapt to best help students learn. Well, again, this ninety-four point five percent shows that there's great value in the peer coaching just to their overall professional development. Everyone knows how much the teachers grew this year in a lot of different ways. And peer coaching definitely supported them. I also know some, it doesn't, it didn't include it in this particular results, but we did a lot of help for teachers for mental health. There were a lot of peer coaches that reported tears. Teachers just, you know, when they were at that breaking point, we were the ones that were there to say, okay, it's all right, just, you know, we'll get, we'll get you through it. So that it's not necessarily shows up in the survey results, but that is a lot of what some of the peer coaches were doing this year, too, was supporting the staff where they, where they needed help. To help prepare for this annual report, we do have a review panel. And the review panel usually has the director of teaching and learning and myself and the peer coaches, union representations and teachers. We generally rotate so that each year we have a secondary building represented and an elementary building represented. And so this year we did OH and the high school because last year was middle school in Wildwood. So that review panel looks at a rubric. The rubric has sixteen benchmarks in it, and it looks at the three different areas. It's not very Minnesota-like to brag, but I'm going to brag a little bit. There are three options for your benchmarks, below proficient, proficient, and exemplary. We scored exemplary in thirteen out of the sixteen benchmarks, which is pretty high. And so I thought that is, that is notable. We do have some challenges, you'll see on this next slide, that our budget is self-sustaining. And one of the biggest challenges, not just with the self-sustaining part of the budget, is also that the costs are going up. So the costs for salaries and benefits and et cetera for the coaching staff are, are rising, but the monies, the funds that we get from the state are not going up. And so that's a, it's a perennial concern for us, the funding versus the cost. The other thing is that because this is so popular, we've had a growth in the number of staff members who participate in the program. For example, early childhood was added. And also, if you are below point five, you don't have to participate in the peer coaching. But a lot of people choose to participate in the peer coaching. So that is a cost, and we're happy to absorb that cost, but it does impact the budget. So our recommendation would be, we'd love to have a full-time peer coach in each of the buildings. Just because that would give us so much more power and, and impact in the program. So that's, that would be my request, is to somehow get some additional funding. I know funds are always hard to come by.
How many are now? Because there was a photo of the four of you, but it doesn't sound like it's for full-time.
It's not for full-time positions, right? That's it. So my, actually, I am a half-time peer coach and a half-time coordinator. And Stacy Triplet, who is in the picture, is half-time peer coach, and the rest of her job is speech. So it's, it is a little, we do a little juggling. Three point oh, full-time, correct. Yeah, that would, that would be, that would be my request. And finally, we do ask our MBE members to vote every year. We voted this year on May 14th, and we have one twenty-four yes and two no votes. But that's, again, good, good results. A lot of people voted. Are there any other questions? Yes?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
There's a lot of research that says that professional development, one and done, doesn't really work, right? And that coaching is where the lasting impact happens. And with the peer coaching, what model is being used or what rubric or things to evaluate those classroom sessions? Like the research of like, I mean, a lot of places or districts will use like Jim Knight's work and like the impact cycle or those sort of things like that, or cognitive coaching? What are the resources and things that MADEA is using?
All of the peer coaches are trained in cognitive coaching. So the initial training that the district sends them to is cognitive coaching, which that part really gets at the heart of changing people's mindsets for that. We do also, so two or three years ago, the coaching staff, I was not part of the coaching staff at the time, but they went to Las Vegas for a coaching conference and really got into Jim Knight. So we've kind of blended in some of the Jim Knight things also as far as, especially the idea of, get a picture of the current reality in your classroom. And when we give feedback, when we go in to observe, we ask the teachers for specifically, what exactly do you want me to look for? What do you want data on? Do you want me to write down all the questions the students are asking? Do you want me to, you know, what, that type of thing? So we do kind of do a hybrid. There are a lot of districts that use, I, I on purpose call it peer coaching rather than instructional coaching. Instructional coaching tends to be evaluative in nature. And there are districts that use the instructional coaches as their evaluation. For example, are they going to offer them continuing contract or not? We don't have that model. I think that at, right now, that's one of the perks of our program because the teachers will be honest with us. When they know that when we're coming in, we're not evaluating them. We're, we're teachers, we've all been in the trenches with them. We know kind of what their, what their struggles, what their challenges are. So they're willing to take more risks with us and open up and say, hey, this is, I'm struggling with this or that. I want you to look for this and, you know, and then we do the cognitive coaching part to help build their efficacy in those skills.
So I think that from my experience, you just see a lot of growth in teachers with this type of a model, and I love it. And, you know, the other piece to it, oftentimes, if you're, when you talk about Jim Knight, he uses a lot of recording with video to be able to go back and watch that because you get a very different picture when you watch yourself on video versus just thinking what happened in the classroom. So I love it. Really excited about the things that you're talking about, and I'd love to see us expand this more. I think it's great.
And we do actually do, we use video for ourselves as coaches. We coach ourselves. So we will videotape ourselves coaching someone, and then we all watch the video and then we do a reflection meeting on the coaching. So it is very powerful. It's, it is, like you said, you think you're doing one thing, and then you watch the video and you say, oh, okay. It's different. So any other questions?
Kevin, go ahead.
I have a couple. Did we at one point, you mentioned we have three time, three full-time equivalents currently? Did we at one time have four?
Oh, yes. When, when we first started in two thousand eight, two thousand, way, way, way back when we first implemented the program, we had a full-time coordinator and four full-time coaches. We had five positions total. And that didn't last for, I don't know how long. And then we switched to part-time coordinator. Yeah, the, the big cut came three to four years ago when we were required to become self-sustaining. That was when we really lost a lot of the coaching, and we had to adjust our plan and, and really cut the program back.
That at, at one point, we actually levied more for this program. And then we, as a board, decided to cut that back. And I want to be a little careful because my, my memory of this is a little bit foggy, but it seems to me that there was a second tier that we could and did levy for. And then we, as a board, decided to cut that back. Does anybody remember this? Or am I just been so long on the board that no one else was here when that happened? Yeah. Well, maybe it's just something we could check into as, okay, remember that. But the other question I had was on yours. Question number two, how valuable is setting building-wide goals to student learning? And about fourteen to fifteen percent of the folks said of very little value or not at all valuable. And I'm curious if you drilled down on that any further than what we're seeing here tonight. In other words, to try to find out why some of the people didn't think it was of value. I mean, I'd be, you know, it just, just reading that statement, it would seem that that would garner a hundred percent response, but.
It would, and it was an anonymous survey, so it's hard to, I can't track down the people that put that. I do have a couple of hunches about why that might have been. Number one, the communication of what the building-wide goals are is done by the school principals. That's kind of out of our control. We do reference them and try, and when we coach people, we reference the strategic plan of the district and that. And it was a chaotic start to the school year. That's usually when we talk about the district, you know, the building-wide goals. And so those are my two hunches about why it got lost in the shuffle this year. Or that could be a, not just this year, maybe that's how they feel about it every year. And we don't, we really don't know when, when it's an anonymous survey. But I do, again, I think that the fact that the building-wide goals are mandated to be connected to a state standard, not a state, but to a standardized assessment. For some teachers, they have a hard time connecting. This is how, it seems just too big and vague to them. How, how does that, how does a math goal connect to my job as a PiAD teacher? So that's. Any other questions or?
We've had a little bit of disrupted learning the past twelve months, fifteen months, and we're using the same goals that we had before we had this disruption in learning for our students. How will potentially different test scores impact our program going forward?
The ones that we hope we're getting.
Right. We're, we're reaching for the same goal with less learning time with our students, which seems not the most. I understand why we rolled the goal over, but is that going to be an issue going forward? Will there be a negative repercussion or impact from potentially lower test scores as we look at those goals?
I, I would hazard a guess to say that when we meet as an instructional leadership team, the district-wide one, this summer, we will have some robust discussions about what do we pick as goals? Which ones do we tie it to? I know, I would hope that people would understand, like you said, we had a lot of learning model changes. And if we don't meet our site goals this year, I don't think anyone is going to be too terribly surprised.
But that'll be built into the conversation.
But it has to be, right? We have, once we get the results, we have to look at where, where the kids are and meet them where they're at.
Go ahead, Tony.
A quick question. And this is just me being new to the board in this process. Do we track historical data of those building goals? Not, I know test scores can fluctuate for multiple reasons, but like the historic trends of our goals actually achieving what we're looking for them to achieve?
Christina, Christina Boyce would be the one that would have the big picture, right? I mean, I, I would say yes, just because I've been in the district for quite a while. So I remember seeing that year to year, that we do have the data going way back. Especially at the high school, we talk about the ACT scores a lot.
It's also in our audit, the complete audit book, all that data.
Excellent. I'm ready to dig into that. So I knew it was somewhere, instead of ask where. There you go. I'm ready to dig into that. So I knew it was somewhere. I said, ask where.
My light reading.
It might be in the.
Summer's coming up. I have to read something. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And, and your terms are three years?
Peer coaching is three to four years. And then the coordinator is four to five years. So that's where we're at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have action items, starting with the approval of donations and grants totaling one hundred and fifteen thousand, forty dollars and eighty-one cents. Thank you, Stacy.
Second.
Thank you, Tony. Moved by Stacy, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? I'd like to thank all the organizations and individuals who have donated to our district. We appreciate it greatly and we'll be using these funds to their wishes, to further the mission of our district. All those in favor of accepting the grants, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have recommendation to approve employment for licensed personnel who continue to be on a probationary status for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. We have one teacher, Jennifer Sakara. Looking for a motion. Second, Kevin, by Kevin, second by Julie. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The final item under action items is the approval of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two preliminary budget. I'd like to make the motion to table this item. We must, uh, pass the budget by, um, July first. And so we've got one more meeting before then. Our presentation tonight needs to be delayed until June and we'll have that presentation. We've, we've had the presentation, the study session, we've had all the information come forward, but we need to delay this until our next regular board meeting. So I'm making a motion to table it.
Second.
Any discussion? Jeff is not able to be with us tonight, so we don't have anyone to present.
It'll just go better if he's here.
Yeah, it would. Yeah, I'm not comfortable giving the presentation.
I thought it had something to do with.
Wondering why he wasn't in the audience.
Yeah.
It's like, is that, is he zooming in?
So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling this item till the June regular board meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have our school, the school board committee reports, starting with, uh, A M S D. Tony.
Let me get my notes here. We had, uh, two meetings in May and quite a lot of speakers, so hang in there with me. Andrea Proll, the agency finance director at the Minnesota Department of Education. You have a great presentation on all things federal COVID funding. She can do a much better job. And the nice thing about Zoom is those meetings are recorded. So you can go back and, you know, skip ahead to her presentation if you want to look into that. Uh, she did the funding for the latest package of the American Rescue Plan, still coming in and being sorted out. But, uh, she does a great job of dissecting that information and giving it down to those of us who need that information.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
The legislative update through M V E and M S B A last week. Did, did anyone else watch that? Is that Emma and?
I didn't go to both. Oh.
I, I just wonder if that's the person. Did you, what did you say her name was? It is Andrea.
Probably.
Yeah, I think it's the same person then. So, okay.
Yes.
I just love, because she gave a lot of.
It's a lot of very detailed.
A lot of detail, but let's.
So I would, I would direct you to the recording if you are interested.
It was way, it was for Jeff, not us. That's what I felt like.
Yes, yes. Um, if you like numbers, that's your, I'll timestamp it for you. We also had guest speakers. I'm not even, I can give you the minutes. There's a whole bunch, but there was, um, Director of Research Evaluation Assessment for the Bloomington Public Schools, Dr. David Heistad, presented along with a slew of researchers from the University of Minnesota. They were presenting their research on school start times as it relates to academic outcomes. And they were looking at three local metro area, I believe they're all metro. Yes, three metro area schools that changed start times, comparing that to three similar schools based on their research parameters that did not. And they did find that there was some academic achievement from having that delayed start time. They were using state surveying data. And I would also, there was a lot of information, a lot of really good questions. And I think it would do justice to go back to watch that recording if you want more information specifically. They did, all the school districts did agree to release their names. We know what the school districts in this research were, as well as they would link to, uh, the published paper that they presented on it. So it's some really good local data that was presented to us on the importance of sleep and how it affects student outcomes. And then lastly, at the, the May seventh meeting, there was a whole slew of updates from the Capitol, the state Capitol and everything that's going on. And since that legislative session has ended without any real progress on the budget, it's now on to special session stuff. So most of that update is actually probably not super relevant because it kind of all starts over a little bit, um, based on how that legislative process works. And then going on, moving on to our May fourth, no, that's the wrong one. Must have been, I'm sorry, the May twenty-first meeting. They put the date on the top and then the meeting date somewhere else. On May twenty-first, we, um, got together again. And this time we were going to get a update from the Department of Education of all the new bills that passed through the legislature. But as I said, it went to special session. So Scott Crocus gave a nice little update of what was going on and what to expect. They're expecting a special session sometime here in June. We do have the budget, budget targets for each committee. And that's about as far as I know in terms of specific details. They're still asking for a lot of advocacy because decisions aren't made at this point. And they're still pushing through all their legislative agenda items that they're advocating for, specifically the brazen, the student formulations. And based on, there was a nice slide that Scott presented, um, showing that the budget target's going to have some given takes because there's just not enough money to get everything in there. So something through the things that they talked about throughout the whole session, not all of it's going to fit based on, I believe it's a five hundred and fifty million dollar budget target for the education committee. And then it ended with, um, recognition of retired superintendents around the state, which was a really nice, a lot of great words were said about the organization and how meaningful and impactful it's been. And that was great to hear. So that's my A M S D update. Any questions?
Thank you.
Had our last board meeting on May seventeenth and, um, the mission moment, let me see, the, um, oh, I, I wanted to share something, but I'm not going to share the mission moment because the mission moment was about spring giving week. And, um, so total between sponsors, auction items and donations, they raised over fifty-two thousand dollars, which was pretty impressive. And an interesting thing that they noted was that their, the need for this, the weekend backpack program was up ten percent again this year. And I just think that that's always something good for us to keep in mind, uh, the food needs of, of our students. Really, that, that was the bulk of our conversation was about spring giving week. And so I think that's all I'm going to share.
Thank you for putting together the items on behalf of the board and getting those into the auction. You, you selected very nice items, I think, um, gave a nice representation in, in the auction for, for different things for community members to bid on. So thank you for taking the time and thoughtfulness there.
Thank you to Barb for helping me.
And if you haven't seen the videos, the, um, the spring giving week videos, may, I believe they're still on their Facebook page or website. And, um, I, I, there are some really moving, um, I don't know, testimonials from our staff and from the May four, in fact, in fact, that I think are worth watching if you have some time.
Maybe that's where the ten percent came from was from Julie Rawlings' video that we watched, I think. But yes, the videos are very much worth tuning into.
Next is M S B A. Um, Barb and I were asked again recently to speak on instructional hour. I think we had, what, twenty-hour turnaround from being asked to, talking to the, um, the House or the Senate, can't remember which group we spoke to last. And then we've also had another meeting with M D E, um, M S B A and Admin, um, working through language. And so we have submitted with M S B A another, uh, round of language to, um, the Senate staff, making some more adjustments based upon that conversation. So, um, I believe everyone is in agreement that it's a good idea, but there's a lot of negotiations still happening in many areas. Building on Tony's report, we have a deadline, there's a deadline tomorrow. The, the conference committee needs to have their budget agreement done for how they're going to spend the money for education. So I'm hoping you've all been watching the legislative action alerts and contacting our senators and house members about that because that deadline is tomorrow. And then the policy language deadline is June fourth. And so if you are communicating with legislators, um, that instructional hour language policy deadline is June fourth. There was a good M S B A webinar, again mainly focused on the federal monies that is available on the M S B A website. And there will be, um, another webinar after the special session from M S B A doing a summary. And then for the new board members, there is a very lengthy, uh, booklet that comes out after session that explains all the unfunded mandates and other changes that have happened, um, through law and policy. So you don't have to take really detailed notes during all those webinars that you have access to. You will eventually get a very nicely put together book from, um, M S B A.
And typically we get that like during summer leadership. And then a lot of times they go over it again at, uh, at the fall advocacy tours. Just in case you're wondering when to get it.
Any questions? Kevin, nine sixteen.
No, can I ask one question? Do, have, did they say already that they're having summer?
Summer seminar will happen. It will be virtual.
Oh, it will be virtual.
A one-day event, virtual event.
Yes, for asking. Okay.
June fifteenth, Indian Hills Golf Course, the nine sixteen foundation is looking for golfers. If anybody is interested in doing that, uh, I'd love for somebody here to go do that because I am a lousy golfer and would not represent. Other news out of nine sixteen, um, there is a fairly lengthy, uh, uh, school resource officer study being done. And, uh, from May, I told November, I am on that committee and for one or two board members on that study group. So I'm hoping that I can glean and garner some information from that that might help us too. Because it's, uh, it is an ongoing debate about the school resource officers. So that is, and then the other big news is of course Connie Hayes, this is, we're getting into her last month. And, uh, and then we're gonna, I think, gonna be in person to bid her farewell and welcome Val Raybo, our new superintendent. That's my report.
Thank you. Summer seminar is August fifth. Yep. And it will be virtual. Any school board subcommittees?
Kelly. The district curriculum advisory committee met and it was an action-packed meeting. Lynn filled every minute of that with lots of great information. So, uh, started off with talking about how Modemedia public schools are supporting reading. And some of the things that were talked about are that, uh, first of all, that next year is a literacy review year in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Also talked about the multi-tiered systems of support, um, at the elementary level. And they talked about ways to assess students, um, and how to assess support for reading using things like running records, reading fluency, to assess where students are at with their reading skills. And that all students receive the core instruction for reading and then to match the intervention to basically what the students' needs are. At Wildwood, some of the things that were talked about are using some of the universal screeners to find out where, uh, support is needed for students and that best, identification early is obviously a way to, uh, get students back on track. And then there was also a conversation about the letters training, which we've heard about before, which I had to understand what the acronym was, which was Language Essentials for Teaching, Reading and Spelling. I had heard that, but I didn't know what that acronym was. And, um, also where they, there was conversation and talk about that, about sixty to seventy percent of the students are reaching the target scores on universal screeners and K one. So that means forty percent are not meeting that target. And what is being done and can be done to help the, the percentage of students that are not meeting that target? Like I mentioned, early intervention, um, doing things like, well, of course, the letters training is helping the, the instruction for the teachers to help support those students. The, um, increased, I guess, um, collection of books for emerging readers. We, I mentioned the multi-tiered systems of support. So lots of different interventions and things to help support students with reading. And then at O H, um, there was this conversation and talk about some of the things that are in place there, like using, um, curriculum and things like Words Their Way. And I could be wrong on this, but it's the A reading. I believe that's the fast reading. Is that correct? The fast reading. And so some of those things to identify where students are at. And then differentiated levels of intervention based on where students are at and progress monitoring and making adjustments with that. It happens every six to eight weeks. So obviously the goal is comprehension for all students and, um, how to achieve comprehension for all, especially when we see at the early level, especially K one, when some of those students are not there yet. So that was the first part of the meeting. The, there were really sort of three parts. The second part was about the changes for music and arts for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two. Do I have those, that correct? That's the right time that through Minnesota arts, the education requirement is different. And so that currently what's being offered in Modemedia schools, that we have to increase our offerings in order to, um, students must be offered at least three arts classes at elementary. And in high school, we need to offer at least three. And those arts could include anything from music, visual arts, dance, theater, media arts. And right now, we don't currently offer a dance class at Modemedia High School. And then there was conversation about at the middle school, being possibly adding things like a media arts or a theater because right now what we offer in six, seven and eight, we have some needs to be able to meet those arts needs and new requirements. So, it was also mentioned about a new, a couple of new courses that are coming. The C T E or the STEAM class will be in two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. And an intro to theater class, I believe this coming fall, two thousand twenty-one. And so some of those needs are, are with, um, that we need to really, um, increase our offerings at the middle school and at the high school. So we talked in small breakout rooms about some of the possibilities. We heard from students about what they would like to see as far as offerings and that there's right now the limitation, like let's say, for example, you're an eighth grade student that you can't take both art and Spanish, limited by the schedule that we currently have. And so how to have an art offering and also be able to take a second language. So, so that was that piece of it. And then the third piece was.
Kelly, before you go on, can we get some clarification? Maybe Lynn can clarify this. We don't have to offer all the areas. We have to offer three. We don't have to have a dance class. I just want to make sure that's clear. I just want to make sure that's clear. We don't have dance, we don't offer that. And it's, we have to offer it because we have consistently offered theater at the high school, but we've never had the enrollment. So we are offering what we need to at the high school, but we don't always have the enrollment for those courses to go. So I understand the piece about the middle school because I get a report as board chair about where we are with those arts, but we've been in compliance at the high school level this entire time, but students have chosen not to take all those areas. Is that, is that correct? I just want to clarify, that is correct, okay, good. Yes. Thank you.
And the last part was about the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, which we've heard from Ally in the past, where she's come and talked to us about that group that is formed and that they held three meetings this year, hoping to continue to grow with attendance and numbers. And some of their future goals are to increase participation and collaboration with other districts and neighboring districts, and collaboration with ISD 622. So that was presented to that group, and then, let's see here, there was conversation about the Youth Leadership Council that was formed this past February, and they have met every two weeks. There are six to eight Montomedi students, I believe, and three 622 students. I could be wrong on those numbers, but I think.
Getting confirmation from one of our.
Yeah. And I love the idea, they talked about possibly creating a podcast focused on equity and wellness. And so I was really excited about hearing about the future possibility of that. And then along the lines of equity, it was shared about the equity initiatives that we have an established equity leadership team, and about 40-ish staff members are on that. And ongoing work with Equity Literacy Institute for Professional Development. So yeah, lots of great shareouts of things upcoming and things that are in the works and continued growth. So it was an action-packed meeting. In fact, I think we could have stayed there six hours to continue conversation about all the things brought up there. So it was a, and that, I guess, wraps up the last meeting with that group.
Any other groups, committees?
Not a subcommittee, but I have a PTO update.
PTO, go ahead.
All right. We had a meeting on May 18th. The PTO is currently offering back-to-school kits that are, can order online for OHA students. They will be delivered to your home, and I believe somewhere in the mid-June, there's a date where free shipping is available up into that mid-June date. So any of the parents or families that have OHA students going out, that's a great way to get your school supplies done for you right now. Original Works is also being available online, so if you are missing any of your student art on a mug or T-shirt or whatever item that you collect on the mantel place, that is available for you. The Strategy Games is offering a after-school kind of farewell to the fifth-grade families and the fifth-grade students. Since we've, Strategy Games at OH Anderson has usually, you know, had 60-plus students in the media center before school in years past. And since those fifth graders haven't had a chance to say goodbye to that event, we're having it on after-school for fifth-grade students only, June 7th. So they're going to have an hour to play their games and before they move on to the middle school. And lastly, and I don't have the date off the top of my head, but coming up here in June, there is going to be a day where students are going to be getting frozen treats. I think there's ice cream and also alternatives for anyone who needs the alternatives handed out outside from the PTO. It's kind of a celebration for end-of-the-year celebrations. So on those fun notes, on the business side of the PTO, they did propose a strategic calendar for next year, a budget for next year, as well as a full set of slate of board candidates for next year that will be voted on here in June. It's a very exciting time for them since they have all of their board positions filled for this next year, and there's going to be a lot of new blood and energy coming in and excitement to hopefully have a more standard PTO-type year next year. So that's my PTO update.
I had a wonderful opportunity to, working with Community Ed, to visit the seniors to deliver the May Day baskets or May Day bags. And it was so much fun that, it was really the highlight of my week. It was just an absolute blast walking in there, and I had, some of the seniors were wanting to help me hand things out, and we were going door-to-door, and in fact, I had to ask, did it matter that they went to the right place because their names were on them, because they weren't reading them, they were just handing them out? They were just having so much fun. We walked, I walked, you know, knocked on doors. People were asking me to come into their room. I felt like with COVID, should I really go in? But they wanted me to come in and sit and chit-chat, and it was just an absolute joy, it was so much fun. They wanted pictures, they wanted to hear about it, see about it, what's going on in Montomedi, what's going on in the schools. So it was just a really fun day to be able to go and do that. So what a great opportunity. And I guess the last thing I'll add is that I stopped up at the food truck last Friday, and the great news is it was, it was so well-attended that there were lines at all of the food trucks and lots of attendance and people hanging out, and the rain sort of held off. It rained just very briefly, but it was, it was well-attended. I was really bummed because my son was playing baseball in Lakeville, so I had to leave the line and go to drive to baseball, but it was well-attended, and so that was fun to be a part of.
Wrap-up committee reports, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Thank you, Kevin. Moved by Kevin, second by Stacy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.